Okay, seven o'clock. We go ahead and call the meeting to order, and if you're able, please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we'll call Madam Clerk.
Mayor Pape?
Here.
Councilmember Chaveta?
Here.
Councilmember Hands?
Here.
Councilmember Caldwell?
Here.
Councilmember Leahy?
Here.
Councilmember Neal? Councilmember Ryder?
Here.
Councilmember Silvers?
Here.
Councilmember Yodrich?
Here.
Okay, thank you, Madam Clerk. Next item up on our agenda is public items. Members of the public are encouraged to use this time to make comments about matters that do not appear on the agenda. Comments about items on the regular agenda will be taken up as each item is considered. Please note that individuals making public comments will be limited to five minutes. We have a sign-up sheet out front, which is blank, but does not preclude you from coming forward at this time. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to make a public comment this evening? One more time. I don't see anybody rushing to the podium, so I'm taking it there's nobody that needs to make a public statement. All right, well, thank you. We'll close out the public items then, and we will move on to the next item, which is the consent agenda. And all items under this heading are considered to be routine by the city council. It may be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member so requests, in which case that item will be moved from the consent agenda and considered separate. We're considering we only have one item on the consent agenda, but is there any discussion of that item before I call for a motion? Does anyone have any questions or concerns about that item? And so I will entertain a motion.
Mayor, I move that we, that the council approve consent agenda, item number one.
Okay, motion made by Mr. Silvers. Do I hear a second?
Mr. Mayor, I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion, a second with Ms. Hands. Okay, Madam Clerk.
Councilmember Chaveta?
Aye.
Councilmember Hands?
Aye.
Councilmember Caldwell?
Aye.
Councilmember Leahy?
Aye.
Councilmember Ryder?
Aye.
Councilmember Silvers?
Aye.
Councilmember Yodrich?
Aye.
Motion passes, seven zero.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Next item up is the mayor's report, and I always like to tell people about the exciting things that's been going on with the council and myself over the last two weeks. And so some of these I might have missed. If so, please let me know, council, and we will add that to the list. But these are the things I know about. Okay, I and Councilmember Hands attended the Flags for Freedom Committee meeting. Everything's on board to put the flags up at fifty-seven oh one, or at the farmer's market anywhere on Marion Drive, on Saturday, July one, at seven a.m. And then, she's flying the flag. Then the flags will come down on July eighth, twenty twenty-three, at ten a.m. So everyone's welcome to come down to that and assist in putting those up and taking them down. My understanding is that we're even going to serve donuts as payment down there. So, yeah, please, please attend if you can. I attended the Northeast Mayor's Luncheon, where we discuss what each city's currently doing. I attended the Sherwood Forest Black Party, where I shared with residents what's been happening in Marion. And I attended the first-ever Marion Business Appreciation Luncheon at the Marion Community Center. We had around, my understanding is about twenty-five businesses attended. We recognize those attendance with over twenty-five-plus years in Marion. The longest-serving business in attendance at the, at the event was Walnut Grove Mobile Home Park, which has been here for over sixty-seven years in Marion, and which turns out to be is actually the same amount of time that the Enac Library has been here in Marion as well. We also had a panel that was made up of Chris Ingle, Brian Dyer, Matt Pennington, the CEO of Drake Development, and David Sims of Johnson County Library, all spoke about different projects that are going on in the city and did a really good job, and we appreciate all that they did. They could kind of tout what Marion is doing, and there's a lot of stuff that's happening in Marion. Big, big thanks go out to Karen Crane. That's the first one we've had. She is our Tourism and Economic Development Manager for putting on the first event ever, and of course, Anna's staff for helping out with that. Chris Hands and I met with Mr. Ingle to set the gin for this meeting. Chris Hands and I attended a ribbon-cutting ceremony provided by the Northeast Chamber of Commerce for a business called SAM. That's an acronym, S-A-M. Business is located at sixty-seven Antioch. This is a large company, which I didn't note till I Googled it. They have over forty locations throughout the United States, and they're now in Marion. They are a geospatial and inspection services company providing surveying and mapping, which is what SAM stands for. They have most of the second floor over there at sixty-seven hundred Antioch. Chris Hands attended the United Community Services Human Services Summit on June twenty-first. Thank you for representing us there. Councilmembers Amy Ryder, Bruce Caldwell, and Chris Hands attended some of the Make Music Day events at the MCC on six twenty-one. And special thanks go out to staff for joining with MMD dash KC for that event. Alan Long, who is over there on the front, raises his hand there, is our new chief over the Overland Park Fire Department. So we want to give a round of applause for Alan for being selected, and by acquisition and being in our contract, he's actually Marion's new fire chief now, too. So we appreciate all you've done in the past and what you do in the future as well. I also want to give some special recognition out to our very own council president, Christine Hands, through the Kansas League of Municipalities, has given her an honor. She's actually in a magazine for the league. And I want you to read a little bit about what's in here, is that Christine Hands is councilmember, obviously, city of Marion, years of public service, at least eighteen years. What public service values does Chris demonstrate? It says, "Service to the community through committee work and volunteering for city-sponsored events, a passion for art, culture, sustainability, with a regional reach." She just doesn't do it here in Marion. She does it elsewhere. Councilmember Christine Hands is an exceptional public servant. Since being elected to the Marion City Council in two thousand and five, Chris has embraced the role of a public servant with both arms. She serves the public in so many different ways, from representing Marion constituents in Ward Three to serving on several regional boards and committees. For the past eighteen years as a city council member, Chris has provided much-needed public service and representation to Marion, Johnson County, and the Kansas City region on a variety of issues, and deserves to be honored for the Public Service Recognition Week, which she, there's a whole list of other things that she's done, and that's in LinkedIn. If you guys want to look up, if you're part of LinkedIn and wanted to look up Christine Hands, you can find out some of the other accolades that she's been involved with, not just in Marion, but throughout the Kansas City region. Let's give Chris a hand.
And, and thanks to whomever nominated me for that wonderful recognition. Guilty.
We appreciate that. Okay, so my understanding is-
Actually, Mayor?
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, go ahead.
I'm just now learning about the donuts that you're going to have on July first.
Yes.
At six a.m., I will be loading those flags onto a trailer for you. Are we going to have donuts at the loading?
I, we can maybe have them by the time you get those flags over to the site. You'll be hungry by that point, and we will be sure-
I think you have to earn them.
We were saving some flags for you until you get back.
It's a donut-earning.
Well, thank you for getting up. Mr. Silver's going to be there at six a.m. to the seven a.m. to load the flags down at our Public Works stores and for us.
Very deserving of a donut.
Yeah, very deserved. Take two. Have two. Okay, there you go. Well, and so, yeah, please, if you're available, come, come up with us at seven a.m. on Saturday, and then following Saturday, we'll be taking them down as well. Okay, so it looks like the next item up, I think, is an executive session. Is that right, Ms. Ingle? Okay. So I will reach out for a motion to, for the executives to go into executive session. Okay, go ahead, Ms.-
How much time do we need?
Fifteen. Okay, fifteen minutes, Ms. Yodrich.
So that'll be seven, I'm doing math, seven twenty-five.
Twenty-five. Yeah, I see twenty-five.
Okay. Mr. Mayor, I move that the governing body recess into executive discussion to discuss the appointment of the Assistant City Administrator pursuant to KSA seven-five dash four-three-one-nine B one, which allows the governing body to recess into executive session to discuss personnel matters of non-elected personnel. Present will be the governing body, city administrator, human resource manager, and city attorney. The meeting will reconvene in the city, in the council chambers at seven twenty-five p.m.
We have a motion. Do I hear a second, Ms. Hands?
Mr. Mayor, I second that.
We have a motion and a second. Madam Clerk?
Councilmember Hands?
Aye.
Councilmember Caldwell?
Aye.
Councilmember Leahy?
Aye.
Councilmember Ryder?
Aye.
Councilmember Silvers?
Aye.
Councilmember Yodrich?
Aye.
Councilmember Chaveta?
Aye.
Motion passes, seven zero.
Well, please stick around for some exciting news, hopefully, when we get out in fifty minutes. Looks like we're right on time. We will reconvene, and I would entertain a motion concerning our executive session.
I thought perhaps Christopher was going to introduce her.
Oh, well, would we like to do that first? That would be, yeah.
Turn on your microphone.
Thank you. I'm happy to recommend to the council Caitlin Guard as my nominee recommendation for the Assistant City Administrator position with the city of Marion. She is currently the deputy with the city of Shawnee, brings a world of experience and wealth of knowledge about municipal government in a city that's in northeast Johnson County, just right down the road from ours. And so look forward to her joining our team with the council's consent. We had a great rigorous process that we put several folks through that was for the director position of Public Works, and she was highly qualified for that, and we decided to pivot with the vacancy and make a recommendation for her to fill that position. So happy to answer any questions about her. She is in the audience. I introduced her, I believed, all of you individually before the meeting. Excited to get her, a contributing member of Team Marion. Happy to answer any questions that you may have. Any questions for Mr. Ingle? Okay, I see no questions for Mr. Ingle. I think, would you like to speak before or after the vote?
After.
Why don't we wait till after the vote? Because, yeah, I'm not, you know, want to jinx you or anything, but anything could happen, so.
Mr. Mayor.
I would entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move that the council accept the recommendation of the mayor and city, and city administrator, and confirm the appointment of Caitlin Guard as Assistant City Administrator.
Do we have a motion? Do I hear a second? Ms. Yodrich?
Mr. Mayor, a second.
Okay, Madam Clerk?
Councilmember Caldwell?
Aye.
Councilmember Leahy?
Aye.
Councilmember Neal?
Aye.
Councilmember Ryder?
Aye.
Councilmember Silvers?
Aye.
Councilmember Yodrich?
Aye.
Councilmember Chaveta?
Aye.
Councilmember Hands?
Aye.
Motion passes, eight zero.
Well, looks like you made it. Ms. Guard, would you like to address the council?
Mr. Mayor and city council, thank you so much for this consideration. It is truly an honor. I'm looking forward to working with all of you and obviously your fabulous staff here at the city of Marion. As Mr. Ingle mentioned, I do have a number of years of experience in the city government realm, and I'm excited to bring it to Marion and work with you all.
Well, we appreciate it. Welcome to Team Marion. I'm sure you're doing fine. Okay, well, moving along here, it looks like our next item up is council items. And the first item up would be approval of a three-year extension to a contract. It looks like Director Oliver is coming to the podium.
Tonight, I'm asking for approval to extend- Sorry. Okay, tonight I'm asking for approval to nego, to extend our contract with our current auditors, AGH. They have done the audit for the past five years, and that completes the contract. Normally, we would issue an RFP at this point and go through the process. However, we are just beginning the process of switching our accounting software. This is going to take approximately nine months, and so trying to, if we were to select a new auditor during that process, trying to get them acquainted with us while we're also trying to update software, et cetera, would be much more difficult. And so I'm just asking for the opportunity to extend the current one until after we're fully implemented, so.
Okay, Ms. Ryder, go ahead.
If you were not doing all of that with the software, would you still want to extend the contract?
Yes, they would be a serious contender if we issued an RFP. We've been very pleased with them. They're very thorough. They're respectful of staff's time, easy to work with, absolutely.
Any other questions? Yeah, Mr. Caldwell?
What's the pricing?
The pricing is, for the two thousand and twenty-three audit, it would be thirty-nine thousand, five hundred dollars, and it would go up by five percent increments.
And how does that compare to previous years?
That, that is comparable. Our current contract had five percent increases in it.
So we're just continuing that five percent?
We really are. This first year is-
Is that a maximum, or is it five percent built in?
No, the thirty-nine, five hundred would be for this year.
Yeah.
And then the following year, but that is a maximum. I mean-
Okay.
The only way that would be more is if we needed a single audit, which anytime we expend more than seven hundred and fifty thousand in federal funds, we have to do that. I don't believe that we'll need to do that this year, but next year, as we're spending ARPA money, we'll have, we'll probably have to have one. And so next year, but the base audit, that's how that works. Did that answer your question? Okay.
Any other questions for Director Oliver? Okay, if I see no other hands being raised, I would entertain a motion. Ms. Hands?
Mr. Mayor, I move that the council approve a three-year extension to the contract with AGH for audit services.
Do we have a motion? Ms. Yodrich?
Mr. Mayor, a second.
Do we have a motion and a second? Madam Clerk?
Councilmember Leahy?
Aye.
Councilmember Neal? I may have lost him.
Councilmember Neal, are you on the phone?
Yes, aye.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Ryder?
Aye.
Councilmember Silvers?
Aye.
Councilmember Yodrich?
Aye.
Councilmember Chaveta?
Aye.
Councilmember Hands?
Aye.
Councilmember Caldwell?
Aye.
Motion passes, eight zero.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Okay, it looks like the next item is consider approval of a budget adjustment. Director Slough, at the podium.
Good evening, mayor and council. Before you this evening is a request for approval of a budget adjustment of twelve thousand, three hundred dollars to move from the workers' compensation line to other contractual services. This is to enhance our basketball goals at the community center. Currently, it's a manual operation of lowering those goals to the required height for our shorter participants, younger participants, and it's very laborious, and it's challenging for the majority of our staff to push up and turn. It's quite complicated. And so we have done some research and found that there's an electrical height adjuster. We only need to do this to two of our goals. On the east court, that's the court that's rented out. That's usually where our younger participants go for rentals, and that's where we have found we are lowering the goal most of the time. If the east court isn't rented, we do lower it for our patrons that require it. But if the goal, goals are rented, if that court is rented, it doesn't make sense to add it to the west side because the basketball courts are in such high demand. We don't want to damage the equipment by lowering them and then having patrons that are too tall dunking on them, because that is what happens. We do have a no dunking rule when they are at the ten-foot height, as a matter of fact. So that is why we are before you today. I do not have the funding and other contractual services, but after speaking with the city administrator and the finance director, they have made this recommendation to bring this forward as a budget adjustment that requires your approval because it's moving money from non-families, as we internally call them, in regards to why we chose the workers' compensation line. If somebody were to get hurt, it would be a workers' comp issue. But the other reason is we've already paid the premiums out of that line, so we know that this funding is available to be moved as well. So happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Director Slough?
I had one real quick. It looks like in the, in the packet, it mentions about half of it is for the actual motors and key switch, and about half is for the electrical infrastructure.
Yes, that is correct, because the motors come from the Porter Company, which is the type of goal they are, but they don't do the electrical work. So, yeah, and because they have, they're trying to work through the conduit that we currently have, it's a little bit more labor than if we just let them willy-nilly do what they want. So we are making sure that the, it'll be a key switch. Currently, if you're familiar with what we have now, it is all key switch operated. So they're trying to match what we currently have. It won't be exact, but it will be close.
Did you guys look at doing all, doing four of the goals for quantities of scale, or?
It would just be double. Yeah, there was no, no quantity-
For real savings.
No quantity break, no, unfortunately. And that's why we decided to only do the two, because those are the two that really are constant, I shouldn't say, but more regularly being lowered. Yes, ma'am?
Ms. Ryder?
Do, is there going to be any damage to the rest of the facility, nearby facility, or is it all isolated on the goals themselves?
It's all isolated on the goals. They'll be able to come in and attach the motors to the existing two goals, and then they'll be running the conduit through existing conduit. There'll probably be some work done, obviously, there'll be work done on the masonry of that wall where the switches will go. So the, there will be some timeline that we will be down. We'll look to do that once school goes back into session, though, so that we're not taking anything offline during our busiest time of the year.
Other questions?
So probably August twelfth. Nobody's counting, though.
Okay, I see no other questions. I would entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I'm happy to make that motion. I move that the council approve a budget adjustment from workers' compensation to other contractual services to automate height adjustment of two basketball goals at the Marion Community Center.
Do we have a motion and a second? Ms. Ryder?
Mr. Mayor, a second.
Do we have a motion and a second? Madam Clerk?
Councilmember Neal?
Aye.
Councilmember Ryder?
Aye.
Councilmember Silvers?
Aye.
Councilmember Yodrich?
Aye.
Councilmember Chaveta?
Aye.
Councilmember Hands?
Aye.
Councilmember Caldwell?
Aye.
Councilmember Leahy?
Aye.
Motion passes, eight zero.
Ms. Hands, go ahead.
Mr. Mayor, could we get someone to pull the blinds? Because poor Councilman Leahy just- Man, okay, thanks. Well, well, don't go to the light, okay?
Okay, I'm glad we settled that. And I will try to refrain Director Slough from dunking when it gets down to your foot, because it's- Yeah, I can't blame that. I probably would prefer that, but it's all right. Okay, looks like our next item up is planning commission. Looks like we got Director Dyer coming to the podium.
Your mayor, council members, Brian Dyer, Community Development Director, and while I get this set up here. And I cut it on the wrong screen. All right, again, good evening, mayor, council members, Brian Dyer, Community Development Director. This evening, we have before you a rezoning and preliminary development plan for the continuation of Marion Grand Station, as we all know, as the redevelopment project for Kmart. The area, I think, we're all familiar with, but just to get everybody acclimated to what we're talking about. Again, this is the site, Sound Mission Parkway's on the north, Antioch here to the east, and EBI to the west. So again, this was the former side of the Kmart building. As you can see, when this arrow was shot by the county, it caught it after Darwin. Kmart building had been destroyed and taken off, and some grading had started. So what we're talking about seemingly is the out parcels, which is these here in blue. And then also included in here also is the preliminary development plan for the gathering space and the canopy area that's going to be located between the two apartment buildings, which is approximately here. So backing up just a little bit, just a little bit of history, as you all recall, a year ago at this point in time, city council approved Marion Grand Station redevelopment project. As part of that development plan, we had two apartment buildings, a parking structure. Those are the things that are under construction right now that you see down there. Two restaurant buildings, which we are not talking about this evening. Those are the two restaurant buildings that go in between the apartment complex, the gathering space. And then at that point in time, there was three buildings being showed on the out parcels, again, this area located up there. Also with that, there was a restriction on that rezoning, the only one drive-through. The preliminary development plan, as before you this evening, has one drive-through, but they've also had a request and show the addition of two pickup windows, which I will get into here in just a second. And because of that, because of the change in that restriction of that original rezoning, that's why this is also a rezoning request in addition to that preliminary development plan. So again, just real briefly, the applicant with all the information they submitted, they also submitted a memo from their project engineer in regards to the stormwater traffic. Stormwater memo said that this is no significant change from the approved stormwater plan. That was a, that was done a year ago. And additionally, there might be, the traffic memo indicated there might be some reduction in traffic based upon the revisions that are being done on this plan. And so kind of in conclusion, before I walk you through the plans here in detail, on June sixth of this year, the planning commission had a public hearing, received public comments, and unanimously recommended approval of this preliminary development plan. And also just want to note that there is also a replat that goes along with this, to, that corresponds with the divisions of property that the development plan shows. That replat had no dedications of easements and rights aways, so it didn't, that's why it did not come to you all. Your planning commission approves plats, you all accept the easements and right-of-way dedicated by those plats. So if there's no easements and right-of-ways dedicated, it does not come to you all. So that plant was approved by the planning commission. So I'm going to walk you through this development plan. So again, we're up here at the corner, Shine Mission Parkway, Antioch. So this is the area we're talking about right now. The previous preliminary development plan showed approximately eleven thousand square feet up here, again, as I mentioned earlier, in three buildings. Now, the reconfiguration is to into two buildings. There's a slight decrease in square footage, down to about ten thousand, four hundred square feet. That's evenly divided between the two buildings. So while the previous plan had three buildings, this one has only two. It does have space for four different occupants, four different businesses. So again, over here is the location of the drive-through. The drive-through lane is, comes up through here. Here is the drive-through menu and where you make your order, and this is where patrons go around, pay for their order, and pick it up. So what's the difference between a drive-through and a pickup window? A pickup window is something that came about post-COVID, is something that is really a trend that's caught on nationwide. I've been to a number of different conferences, and it is something that all restaurants, fast casual, even your traditional sit-down restaurants, are really trying to, really part of their business model, something they want to use. So drive-through, that is a typical drive-through. What you think of McNolan, you go into, get in the queue in your car, in the, in the drive-through lane, you make an order at the menu board, you go around, you pay for your food and pick up your food all at the same time. Pickup windows are different. That's usually, you do an order off online, like by an app, not at the site. You make your order, make your payment, you go to the pickup window, pick up your food, and you're off and running, which is much like what Chipotle is right now.
Does our municipal code actually differentiate between the two?
It does. It doesn't differentiate, doesn't really differentiate between the two at all. Actually, it only really differentiates at a very small level between drive-through and what a Sonic is, like a drive-up. So really, there's very small differentiation. The bigger differentiation is it does talk about, like, like Sonics, like drive-up places, so. So again, going back to this, so here is- So, again, going back to this, so here is the actual drive-through pick window, over drive-through lane window. And this is the one pickup window, and here is the second pickup window. So, obviously, these are restaurant spaces here and here, and then this is being proposed retail on this, for that tenant space there. Here is kind of zooming out, kind of giving an overall view of the development. Again, what I just showed you is this corner up here, so the main entrance off of Shawnee Mission Parkway is here. Over here is Krispy Kreme, this is Freddy's, a large field of parking here to serve the whole entire complex. And then, what I mentioned earlier, what's being constructed right now, apartment buildings on the east and the west, and then the parking structure back here. So, this is also the public space with the canopy, the main central feature, kind of the really neat part of this development, just a second. And then these are the two restaurant buildings. So, assuming that this application is approved this evening, really, the only remaining two items that the developer will need to come back to the city for approval is going to be a final development plan for these two restaurants located here. So, landscape plan, again, very similar to what was approved earlier, fits right in with the current, with the landscape plan overall. Got perimeter landscaping here to, again, screen the drive-through lanes, screen the parking areas. Got additional landscaping here by the location of the trash enclosures around this here. And then also the trash enclosure over here, there is a retaining wall, a little bit of screening for it. Also, the trash enclosures are, you know, typical masonry, just like the rest of the buildings with gates and fences on, excuse me, with a gate enclosure on there. Interior landscaping fits with what's already been approved, so very much in line with the previous approvals. Again, zooming out to give an overall view of the landscaping plan for the entire project. So, a little bit more about the actual buildings themselves. This is the architectural rendering for it. So, this will be the west building, so the building that is closest to the main entry point. So, this here, just a little bit more orientation, this is the west side of the building, so this is the drive-through window. And then down here is the actual pickup window. Exterior material is very similar to what the exterior materials are for the apartment complex. The developer and the architect worked hard to make sure that the north elevation, which is this one here, which is the back of house, that's going to house the kitchen area and things like that, worked to make sure it still had a, you know, a pleasing front to Shawnee Mission Parkway. It didn't just look like the back of house. So, they worked hard on that to make sure it had an appearance of glazing, architectural features of overhangs. And then this is the building to the east. So, again, this is the pickup window here, getting similar to the other building, getting fits in with the architecture of the apartment complexes. And also, in the same, same fashion, this is the north elevation. They worked to make sure that the facade fit in with the overall look of, of the development. So, again, with that, staff recommends approval of this with conditions. Your planning commission unanimously recommend approval of this as well. The applicant is also here and present, be happy to answer any questions you may have. But at this time, I'd be happy to answer questions that the council has.
Any questions for Director Dyer? Okay, Ms. Yodrich.
This might be a question more for the applicant, but how many cars can back up in that pickup lane on, I believe it would be the east side? The west, the eastmost building on the west side? So, that weird, yeah. How many cars can back up in that lane before it?
This side?
Blocks. Nope, other one. Yeah, that little interior racetrack.
Yeah, this one right here, for the pickup window?
Yeah, how, how much room is there before it blocks the entry exit into there?
I'm sure the applicant can give you a better indication of that. Our staff did not have them do an analysis of that, because again, it's a pickup window, so the idea is that folks aren't queuing up for it. And in our observations of the Chipotle, it's not been very much of a queuing up situation, because again, it is a pickup window.
Right.
You have to have your order ready, you have to let them know you're coming to pick it up. So, but again, I think the applicant can probably give you a better answer on that as well.
Right, I, I just would like some explanation, because it seems like a strange configuration for, well, strange direction, to come in and go left immediately and then around, instead of just going in and going. But I know they need to come in on the driver's side, so.
And there's also, also, they do have the pass-through right here. So, if for some reason it's blocked, you can come up and pass through and park right here, as well without having to go through the drive-through.
Yeah, I'm just worried about any kind of congestion there with parking and all that, so. If they're not concerned about it, that's great, but it's an interesting design.
Do we, does anyone want to address that? Does anyone know from applicants?
I don't know if there's any more questions from the council. If you're done with me, I'll let, I'll let the applicant come up here.
If they, if they can.
We have any questions for Director Dyer?
I just want to touch back on drive-through versus pickup. So, our code doesn't differentiate, so these are really drive-through lanes as far as our municipal code is concerned.
Uh, our municipal code really doesn't speak to drive-through lanes.
So, anything that is a, I mean, bank, McDonald's, Chipotle, would all be drive-through lanes?
Well, the drive-through lane aspect was spelled out in these ordinance that was approved.
Yeah, so that, what does the ordinance say?
The ordinance that approved, I'd have to go back, the ordinance, and when I talk about the ordinance, it was the ordinance for the original Merriam Grand Station approval. And the ordinance restricted it that there was only one drive-through that was allowed in the development.
Yeah, but I guess my point is, I feel like we're splitting hairs and we're adding two more drive-through lanes.
There is a difference in, in from staff's moment, my, my.
There's a difference, but like, that's like saying, no, you can't build a blue building, but they're going to make it azure. I mean, it's, it's kind of splitting hairs, in my, in my opinion.
Again, the drive-throughs typically have a longer queuing, have more folks standing and more folks idling in, in the queue, and longer times, while the pickup windows generally have been shown to be more efficient and less queuing of folks sitting in, in the lane, like obviously emissions and things like that. So, that's why, from, again, from a staff's perspective, we, we did differentiate that, because drive-through lanes seem to be more, at least again, from our observation, from some of the reading and, and things we've, we've been through. The drive-through lanes with, definitely seem to be more intense than the pickup lanes.
Have another one, but I'll let Bruce go. Give him, Mr. Caldwell.
How does this impact the amount of green space in the development compared to paved surface? Because that just looks like it's a tangle of roads.
It's very similar. There was not much of a significant change in the two.
Okay, so basically, we've traded out parking spots for all these roads?
Yes, that would probably be, that's.
So, do we have enough parking now?
There, as was originally approved, there is still, they're still underparked per city code. But per the Traffic Institute code manual, they have adequate parking. And again, it's along the philosophy of reduced parking, less pavement, less, less runoff. So, again, they do have, they do not meet city code in regards to parking. But that was something with the original approval, that was okayed at that point in time.
But how much, how much more does it not meet because of this?
Um, I'd have to go back to the staff report. I believe it's underparked per our code. I want to say, I believe it was 30 or something like that. I have to go back through the staff report.
But there is less parking because of this.
There, they do, because of the way this is configured, this configuration does not meet our parking requirements in the city code.
But it didn't to begin with either.
That's exactly right.
But there is less parking now than there was in the original plan.
Less actual spaces?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, because we've turned it into roads. But then, I guess, unless, you need to park if you're going through the drive-through.
Or the pickup window.
Pickup window, whatever. It just seems like a tangle of roads, but I'm not a guy that goes through drive-throughs, so. That's just me.
Ms. Ryder.
So, is the, sorry, is there also a drive-through for, so there's a drive-through for the west building and the east building?
There is a drive-through, this is a drive-through for this building, and this is the pickup window here.
For that building?
And then this is a pickup window here.
And that's a separate building?
Correct.
Okay. So, that one on the right side does not actually have a drive-through, it's just a pickup window?
That is correct.
Okay. Do we have any idea who's planning on being in those buildings yet?
It'd be a question for the applicant.
Okay.
Mr. Leahy.
I'm looking at the landscape plans, and the landscape requirements call for quite a few trees. Is that for the overall site, or is that just for these out parcels?
That is, that is for the overall site, so the, again, a little bit of division of what's here. And again, that's something staff has been working through, and I wouldn't say struggling, but making sure we're all clear with. There is the overall landscape plan, the overall hardscape or, or infrastructure plan that will be installed. That is being, will be installed with the first phase of it, and again, the applicant could probably address it better than me. So, it doesn't, it does appear like there's not going to be trees installed with part of this, but there will be. You can see them very faintly put in here, because they're indicating that those trees will either be, will already be installed. They will not be installed as part of this. So, here it shows a little better, you can see the street trees coming around here much better on this, on this landscape plan. So, yeah, they're just simply indicating that this will not be, those street trees are going to be installed not by this project. It'll, they will be there already.
And that's probably putting you on the spot, but do you know what our code require, what qualifies as a tree? Like, do these six-foot junipers count as trees?
Yes, our code just simply, our code lists trees that cannot be used and can, and lists trees that cannot be used. Essentially, they need to be two-inch caliper.
Correct. The other thing that seems to be missing is the corner monument. Didn't we have a monument or an art or?
Yes, some previous renderings, it was not part of the development plan, previous renderings, they did show that as part of, because of all the infrastructure that was going to be up there and everything, and all the undergrounding, they have moved it back to the public art space. So, that is actually part of the conditions of approval, and also, I believe, of the original one, as well as, I believe it's in the redevelopment agreement. So, there is art that's going to be located, does it show up there?
So, we don't, we don't have that corner monument fountain that was shown at Antioch and Shawnee Mission Parkway any longer?
So, the art is going to be coming back to you. So, the art that was there and the monument is going to be, is going to be right in this location right here.
Any other questions for Director Dyer? Oh, yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, really quick. So, I'm really struggling with the, the fact that the back of the house is on Shawnee Mission Parkway, which is counterintuitive to like pedestrian-friendly and like all these things that we talked about as we were working through this redevelopment agreement. So, I don't really have a question. I'm just making a statement that I know our planning commission put this forward, and I trust them, and I will vote for this. But that's just super frustrating that like, we have this wonderful busy intersection, and then I get it, you did great job, you know, putting glazing on the front, but that's not counterintuitive. Like, that's just counterintuitive to everything we talked about when we were working on this agreement. And three drive-throughs, whether they're pickup lanes or drive-throughs, is going to cause way more traffic and way more idling than we talked about in the beginning. So, that's just a statement and a sense, sense of frustration that I've had since this has been on the plan. So, no question, but just statements.
I agree with that, Stacy. It's well put.
Go ahead.
Actually, now that Stacy brought it up, I had mentioned earlier to Brian that my concern is, we talked about doing this beautiful development that was going to be taking over what was a blighted, closed business. And now, I feel like we're going to see lines of cars in pickup lines and drive-through windows, and I don't think that was what we agreed on. I also have a little bit of concern, and maybe the developer can help answer this, but the placement of the trash receptacles on the east side of the property, I'm concerned about what time those dumpsters will be emptied, because there are houses across the street from that. Anyone who's lived across the street from a dumpster that gets picked up at 6:00 in the morning or 5:30 in the morning, it's not pleasant.
There doesn't appear to be any pedestrian access from Antioch to those retail and restaurant sites. It looks like they have to cut through the parking lot to get up there, or go around and come down from Shawnee Mission Parkway.
Well, because of the grade, because of the grade differences, remember, this will have a, this has a retaining wall up here. The pedestrian access does have to come from, from down there. This, this has retain.
This is a retaining wall up here.
Yeah, but if you look at that curb cut there, there's no sidewalk up to those restaurants.
So, on the pedestrian access was going to, is up here on Shawnee Mission Parkway, though?
So, if you're coming north on Antioch, you have to go around the buildings. Okay.
Any other questions for Director Dyer? Are we going to, ready for the applicant? Okay, I think we're ready for the applicant to come forward and address some of these questions that were directed toward him, but then.
Good evening, members of the commission. Dave Olson, representing Merriam Grand Station.
X, and I forgot to hit the button. I keep watching people do that. So, I won't go through everything that Brian talked about. What I'd like to talk about is, that moved fast. Where we started was with Kmart, and where we are today. This is a very current aerial that was taken, and you can see the excavations, and I'm there. Okay, excavation for the apartment building here, parking deck here, and apartment building here. If you've been by recently, you can see columns starting to come out of the ground for the apartment buildings. Things are ramping up in terms of construction momentum. So, tonight, like Brian had explained, we're here for the outlot development here in the northeast corner. I did hear several questions that, if I can spin this slowly. With respect to the app-up, is what I like to call them, that way, the confusion factor. My understanding is they experience roughly 30-second wait time between pulling in, picking up their food, and they leave. If you've been in a typical drive-through McDonald's, Starbucks, you know that wait time is quite a bit longer. So, the number of cars, I believe we've got in excess of six cars even before backing up into the main drive area here. But we've situated this so that there's a bypass lane there that you can get to the parking. And this is then one-way only all the way around to help with that stacking. I heard trash dumpster locations, locating a trash dumpster is one of the most difficult parts of site layout. You need to get it in line with the drive, so that, you know, the truck has the ability to advance to it and then retreat, right? So, it has to have that maneuverability while, you know, making the site efficient. So, the, you know, there are limited options. This, unfortunately, is the best option for this site, so that, you know, the trash truck wouldn't be retreating in reverse along that drive. They have the ability to pull in this drive, pick up, and then they're retreating in that direction. So, we're trying to make them as, you know, visually appealing for a trash enclosure as you can get. We're using the same materials as a building for that enclosure. So, we've. So we've frankly probably done the best we can do with respect to that proximity.
I'm sorry to interrupt, but my, my, my concern is not necessarily for the optics or, or the, the beautification of the area or the, um, functionality of it. My concern is for the houses across the street, across Antioch.
Concerned with both.
Right, but I, I can see with the design, at least it's laid out, like, there's not much that can be done with the location, but, um, contractual agreements with maybe the trash companies.
Pickup time to after six AM? I heard you say six AM.
Well, six AM, six AM can-
We could, we could add-
An appropriate time was put in.
We could add a condition to that. Or agree to work-
Yes, that would be a better way to handle that one, yes.
Thanks for pulling me back a little bit, Brian. The number of queues, uh, trash enclosure, green space and landscaping. I wanted to make sure that, um, clearly the overall PDP that was approved for the site, that landscaping, as Brian was explaining, if you look closer at the landscape plan here, I know probably eight and a half by eleven, you can't see it, but everything that was included in the PDP, you basically can't see it in your package. So everything that's on the landscape plan here that you can see, uh, that pops out at you, that's in addition to the original PDP. And that primarily, um, is, uh, the smaller plantings around the perimeter in addition to the street trees.
Yeah, I think that there's, there's two questions in regards to landscape, and Bruce brought up the question, and I'm sure David's concerned with it as well. Compared to what we had originally anticipated, what's our impervious to pervious surface from the previously agreed-to site plan?
Uh, we're at the same pervious area, um, and I'm looking at my civil engineer, but, um, same pervious area as before, so no change in that.
And so the other, the other thing that goes along with that is the number of plantings, and I know that we're looking at requirements for the entire Marion Grand Station, but do, would these out parcels qualify on their own with, for the requirements for these three lots? For these two lots?
Including the perimeter plantings that was included in it.
If we carve out these two lots,
Yeah.
do they qualify?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Bruce, did that answer your, did that kind of touch on your question?
And I'm, um, I would like to address, um, Ms. Chavetta's, uh, point about orientation of the buildings. And that is, um, to me, a perplexing situation. A lot of cities we go to, they want the buildings up against, uh, the roadway to hide the parking, rather than having the parking, you know, visible from the main roadways. So the, this approach does that to where it basically shields, um, you know, the, um, traffic view of the parking lot. So you're seeing the ar- um, architectural components of the building, uh, rather than, uh, looking at the, the asphalt paving. So there's always two approaches to building placement. We, we believe this is a more efficient layout in this case due to the entry from Shawnee Mission Parkway. The, you know, parking is immediate to, you know, once you enter the shopping center from Shawnee Mission Parkway as well as from Antioch. So just two, um, uh, thought processes, um, and, um, that's what, what we've chosen to pursue, so.
Are you, are you taking any, any special concerns to, to hide the utilities? Because like, we're spending a lot of money to bury utilities on the street. And then we're going to look at electrical panels and meter boxes on the backsides of these buildings, and we're, all we're going to see is spandrel glass that you can't see through, or we're going to see people's bakery carts pushed up against the clear glass on Shawnee Mission Parkway, uh, to stay, to counsel, to Shavetta's point that, you know, we're looking at the back ends of all these buildings now be, and drive aisles.
Okay, um, to address your, uh, first concern about utilities, we are locating, uh, electric equipment on the east wall of the west building and the west wall of the east building. So they're not located on the north wall that is facing Shawnee Mission Parkway. Gas, uh, gas meters, those will be located on the north side. That's one of those strange requirements from, uh, one gas, um, ninety degrees to the building, but, uh, those will be well-screened, uh, with plantings along the edge. So, um, telephone, D marks, those will also be on those interior walls. Everything is underground, electric, telephone, gas, water, sewer. So, um, as a part of, um,
Except the giant transformer on Shawnee Mission Parkway.
And as a part of the undergrounding along Shawnee Mission Parkway, the transformer locations have been coordinated with the, uh, design that Evergy has put together for undergrounding along Shawnee Mission Parkway, and there will be other switchgear as a result of the undergrounding that is placed along Shawnee Mission Parkway. But all the poles, uh, will be gone.
Ms. Roderick, go ahead.
Will there be irrigation to these plantings as well?
Yes, yes. Site is fully irrigated.
Anything else you want to address before we ask, are there any questions?
I think I picked up most of the questions at this point, if I missed one, uh, forgive me.
Ms. Yonrich, go ahead.
So we haven't seen anything for the other two restaurants in the canopy. Are those restaurants going to need pickup lanes as well?
No, they will not. Those will be, uh, sit-down restaurants. Let me, one thing that you did say, let me see if I can-
Because I would hate to see that design also changed.
Did I not have the civic plan in this presentation? Well, we use this, uh, to demonstrate. So the art feature, which is one of the conditions of approval, that art feature comes back, like Brian, uh, was saying, and that feature will be located at the rear of the canopy in that, um, sort of wagon wheel, uh, spoke area. The, uh, civic center design is part of tonight's PDP, but the building design, we will be coming back, um, for design of each one of those, uh, restaurant buildings. So the site layout plan is not anticipated to change. And if you're, um, wondering about app-up or drive-throughs, we do not intend to incorporate those into those restaurant designs.
Would it be safe to say that if a plant comes back with drive-throughs or pickup windows, we will not approve it for those two restaurants? Just to be clear?
I think that's a good message to send.
Ms. Yonrich, go ahead.
When you said the artwork is going to be at the back of the canopy, isn't that where the parking garage is?
It is much further back.
Way further.
Yeah.
There's green space beyond the canopy, okay.
Right.
It is, you can't see it on there.
Go ahead, Ms. Yonrich.
Yeah, I have one last question. Do you have committed tenants? I know you might have signed NDAs, but committed tenants for these spaces?
The front tenants, we have three, uh, leases, they are not executed. They are near execution form, and we have a strong LOI at this juncture for the remaining retail space. So we're very close. We're at a point that, uh, we've released construction documents for building permit application at this point. That's how firm we feel the deals are.
Is it now a single retail space? That building, that's?
There were, the site plans divided into two buildings, two tenants each. So we have three restaurants, two in the west building, one restaurant in the east, and a retail space. And, uh, we're working a very strong LOI on the retail space.
Uh, can you talk about the pedestrian access from northbound Antioch?
Pedestrian access, that was the other one. So, um, for overall, um, you know, we have the sidewalk along Shawnee Mission Parkway with the sidewalk coming down the main entry. Then we connect to the out parcel here as well as a, um, potential connection here if deemed appropriate. And Brian and I have, have talked about that. I don't think it's good to have folks, um, crossing the drives-throughs, so we've opted to limit that connectivity. But the sidewalk then also continues down and connects to the other, um, space here. Now, in this case, we have provided a sidewalk connection from Shawnee Mission Parkway here uh, because again, that is an app-up rather than a full drive-through.
Um, the other thing, we haven't talked a lot about it, but the, uh, the civic space down by the, the two restaurants in the canopy is, it looks like the, the center seating area that was underneath the canopy seems to be, I don't want to say gone, but it's not shown.
Uh, we have a number of benches and fire pits that are in, uh, the, beneath the canopy. You're probably seeing the rectangles, and those, those are, uh, seating benches on either side of a fire pit.
Ms. Roderick, go ahead.
Before you change from this image, um, can you demonstrate the direction of traffic flow from Shawnee Mission Parkway and then again from Antioch through and around all this parking?
Traffic, cars?
Yes.
Okay. Shawnee Mission Parkway, right in, excuse me, right in, right out. You would, I keep losing the cursor. Enter the site here, you would enter, um, here and app up there. You can leave that direction or you can leave this direction. Over here, you can continue down the drive or you could enter here and go in, around, and back out. That is the main shopping center drive here, and that probably doesn't jump out in this image, but there's landscape islands here, uh, that then separate the main drive. So from Antioch, um, you can enter, uh, the main drive here and go through the app-out, app-up and, um, either leave Shawnee Mission Parkway or come back and exit Antioch. So from Antioch here, you can come down the main drive.
So that like big oval in the middle is a sidewalk? Does it, in the, around, like, between the main drive and the drive-through?
This is-
Oh, that's parking. Okay.
Yeah, the drive is gray and the, the parking is light, which includes the landscape islands.
So what is your queuing distance from the entrance to your, specifically the drive-through lane rather than the app-up lane? Yes.
Uh, we have queuing for eighteen cars.
Eighteen cars through the entire?
Yeah, to the, uh, pickup window.
Okay.
That's a lot of cars.
Yeah. Okay, thank you.
Sorry, I don't, I don't mean to keep prolonging this, but I, I had a question about the drive that comes down one way from where the dumpster is on the, um, east. When you were demonstrating,
Here.
I'm sorry, no, uh, your east parcels?
Here?
Yes. So that drive that goes one way down. I was trying to figure out what the purpose of that is, and when you just explained the traffic flow, you kind, you, you didn't show that. Is that strictly for overflow parking for the, for the two businesses?
Sure.
Okay.
Okay, any other questions? Mr. Olson. Yeah, that's it? Think we've got them all answered? All right.
So I should, I should conclude by saying we've, uh, read staff's, uh, recommended conditions. We understand them, we accept them, and ask for your approval. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, sir. Well, that was-
Director Dyer, what exactly do we, are we voting on? Like, what conditions are we voting to change, amend, approve?
So the conditions that are on, in the staff report and also in the ordinance are the conditions for, um, this, uh, development. It is changing only one condition that you originally approved. So in your original approval of this project, there's a condition about, uh, one drive-through, and so there is a change to that condition is essentially being removed, and you're replacing it with the condition of one drive-through and two pickup windows. And then all the other conditions that were originally, um, part of your original approval a year ago still remain in place. Uh, they, they have fulfilled the majority of those conditions, so there's only a few of them left. And then these are initial, these are additional conditions to, for, related to this project.
Now, we didn't, we didn't stipulate that our public art had to be street-facing?
Pardon?
Uh, we didn't stipulate that our, that the public art piece had to be street-facing?
No, actually, the original PDP that was approved showed the public art in the location where it's at now.
Any other, okay, Mr. Scott.
So we fast forward fifteen, twenty years into the future, and we have different tenants, and someone wants to change those pickup windows into drive-through windows? Will this ordinance prevent that?
Correct. Yes, it will. They need to come back for rezoning action. So to finish that thought, um, they will need to come back through the planning commission, whoever it is, need to come back through the planning commission and then ultimately the city council to have that.
So it will take another act?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
And, and again, that's why staff worded it and the way we worded it.
Any other questions for anyone? Well, it'll be interesting to see how this goes, but I would entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor.
Okay, go ahead, Ms. Yonrich.
I move that the council concur with the recommendation of the planning commission and approve with conditions the request for rezoning and associated preliminary development plan for the grand station redevelopment out parcels located in the southwest corner of Shawnee Mission Parkway and Antioch Road.
Yeah, we have a motion on the floor, do I hear a second? Okay, go ahead, Ms. Yonrich.
Mr. Mayor, a second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, Madam Clark.
Councilmember Ryder.
In the hopes that adding two pickup lanes will minimize traffic sitting, still, I will vote yes.
Councilmember Silvers.
I will vote yea, but I-
I will vote yea, but I do want to express my disappointment with the number of changes from our original discussions.
Councilmember Yadrich.
I am just so exhausted by the way that this has, was sold to us and then the way that it has changed. And I am conflicted by that because my trust is waning. And so I'll vote aye in the hopes that this is, this is the last time that I feel like I've been hoodwinked on, on some of these things.
Councilmember Chiveta.
Aye, only because I trust our planning commission and our staff.
Councilmember Hands.
Aye.
Councilmember Caldwell.
Aye.
Councilmember Leahy.
I think this is too far of a cry from what we originally were promised. I'm going to vote no.
Councilmember Neal. I think I lost him on the phone.
Councilmember Neal, are you available?
Yeah, I think he's phoned, died. But Mayor, you do get to vote on this. It's a rezoning.
Well, I'm somewhat disappointed as the council has indicated here in reference to some pretty drastic changes to the whole project. But in light of, as Ms. Chiveta said, our planning commissioner, staff are recommending it, so I will vote aye.
Motion carries seven, one.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Okay. Wow. Thank you, gentlemen. Let's not see too many more changes, okay? Thank you. Next item up, I guess, is the 2024 budget presentation. We got Director Oliver coming to the podium.
Where do I? Okay. Okay. Yeah, I was going to get the one down there, but this mouse is sticky. It is, it's like. Yeah, like, like you barely move it and it's like. Oh, no, no, no.
Okay, tonight, we're having the revenue review. In two weeks, at the next city council meeting, we'll talk about expenditures. So this is all about revenues tonight. When we look at our general fund and what makes up our revenue in there, really our most important fund, we can see that 58% or the red portion is from sales tax. 39% is from sales tax from automobile sales alone. And so as we've talked before, we're very reliant on that automobile sales and that sector. So one of the many reasons that, you know, we try to be conservative. 22% comes from property tax. You can see that up in the blue. And then the other 20% is from other sources. Sales tax, our most important revenue source. 2020 was a down year. It was the pandemic. We had a very nice rebound in 2021 and additional growth in 2022. Right now, I'm keeping the estimate for 23 and 24 at approximately the same level we had last year for a couple of reasons. One being that we're so reliant on automobile sales. There's no reason to think that won't continue, but maybe it won't.
You know about where 2019 was relative?
2019 was around the, I believe it was around the 15, 16 million. We took a hit, but it wasn't substantial.
We've come back pretty strong.
We came back, we more than came back in 21. It was an unbelievable year. One other threat that we have, kind of two automobile sales or sales tax that we collect is the Kansas Legislature passed a bill that exempted delivery charges on automobile sales from sales tax. And that begins July 1. I did a finger in the air, if we saw this many cars and do this and this. And I came up with it impacting us about 200,000 a year. I mean, we'll see how that actually, actually does impact us. So being cautious, I'm just keeping it flat. Property tax, as you may recall, when we did the goals, you guys actually set a goal that said, while maintaining adequate reserves and funding city services, reduce the city's mill levy when possible. The proposed budget that you're going to see tonight and follow through with in two weeks actually does propose a mill levy reduction. It's a quarter cent mill levy reduction. This would be the first change to the mill levy since 2008. And actually, the change in 2008 was to raise it. And so it's been a long time since the mill levy's been reduced in any way. So I thought that was pretty exciting news. One of, the way that we're kind of funding that is the 2012 bonds that were, the bonds that were issued in 2012 are going to be fully retired this year, just in a month, we're going to, or a couple of months, we're going to be paying those off. And that's a big, big deal. And so we're not going to have as much debt service payments. So we're actually going to reduce the portion of the mill that is with, with that. Over a five-year period, the impact of reducing that will be a reduction of about 225,000 in revenue to the city. So talking a little bit more about property tax, we got our updated assessed value numbers June 15. We can see that residential's about 47%, commercials 50, and then there's this other that's 3%. Really, you could lump most of that in the commercial. What that is, estate assessed utilities and railroads. And so those kind, really are commercial, but just listed separately. Residential this year had a 10.6% increase in value. Commercial increased by 6.9%. Okay, I know all of you are familiar with the revenue neutral rate. I feel like every time I stand up here, we talk about it. But just to remind you again, it's the tax rate for the current year that would generate the same property tax as levied the previous year. Doesn't allow for CPI or for new construction. So when we put the numbers in, last year, we had an assessed valuation of 247 million with the mill levy rate of 27.665 that generated $6,851,000. This year, if we choose to go with the revenue neutral rate, our rate would have to be 25.547, which would reduce the levy by 2.1 mills. Total property tax would basically be the same. If you look at what the budget is going to propose, we have the 268 million in assessed valuation. With the quarter mill reduction, that's 27.415. So we would have a $7.3 million property tax levy. So we would actually be levying 500,000 more than what the revenue neutral rate. So we'll have to have a revenue neutral hearing and actually pass a resolution saying we're going to exceed it, even though we're lowering the rate. So what happens now? If we do, in fact, intend to exceed that revenue neutral rate, we'll have to contact the county and let them know what our intent is. We'll have to hold a public hearing in August and we'll pass, have to pass a resolution, just as we did last year. Well, the last two years. So again, the current budget does assume a .250 reduction in the city mill rate. We're not necessarily asking you tonight whether or not you want to exceed the revenue neutral rate. We'll do that next time after we've shown you what's actually in the budget. But that's where we're at now. Yes, sir?
Can we back up about four or five slides?
Sure, tell me when to stop.
Well, here, stop here.
Okay.
What would our number be if we took into account the CPI and new construction?
Okay. I actually, I actually have that slide.
Thank you for anticipating that.
Let me just get back here. It's at the very back.
Weird, it's like they almost knew you were going to ask.
Okay. Okay, I did that. So if we took the revenue neutral rate of 25.547 mills, the new construction equivalates to a .026 mill or $7,000. The CPI for 2022 grew 7.9% or 499,723. So by doing that, you would come up with a mill levy rate of 27.436. We're proposing a 27.415. I promise.
We don't use that as our target? Because that's a number I can hold up to constituents and say, here's some logic. It's just not all based on the value of your real estate going up, so we're going to reap more money.
We, 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 we pressure tested it with this formula, but this formula, we didn't feel was an adopted formula. It's a formula that we discussed. So once we looked at the bond and interest part of the property mill and the fact that we're able to lower that because we expired the debt, grabbing a quarter percent and seeing that it actually exceeds that amount. Correct.
Yes, it is.
Okay. So we can argue about this, I'm more, because I don't, I don't want to lower it a quarter.
Damn it, Bruce. I, it, to me, was quite amazing at how close the two numbers were. That'll never, ever happen again. Okay.
And that is your slide. That slide's after the question slide. I don't know if you noticed that.
Yeah, it was in there just because we thought this may get asked.
We didn't want to.
You allowed me to embarrass myself.
Okay, so we talked about this. Okay, and talking about fund balance, we anticipate fund balance will, at the end of 2024, this is an estimated one of about 9,570,000. That kind of looks like it's going down a little. That's just because this has very conservative assumptions in it. Realistically, usually, we show that curve and it continues to kind of inch up and, which is probably what that would happen. But, but either way, that still puts us well within our policy guidelines over the five-year time period. And we do spend that over the five-year time with capital projects, et cetera, knowing that before we get to 2028 and we're at 31.9%, we're going to have several budgets to adjust items if we're needing to.
And, and these assume that the mill decrease, so these.
Yes, this all assumes with the mill decrease.
I was, I was about to ask, so 30 to 35% is where we like to keep our reserve?
Right, right, right.
For policy.
Director Oliver, will we be, in 2027, will, or actually have additional debt reduction itself as far as?
Yes, we will. Yes, we will. They'll all, right.
We'll be debt-free in 2027?
That is correct.
Does anyone remember what those bonds were issued for?
The 2012 were refinancing bonds from Merriam Town Center. So in 2012, we refinanced some debt, took advantage of some different interest rates. It was actually the, I'm going to forget the terms. I wish Jeff White was still here. He helped us with it. But yeah, they're 2012 refinancing, refinanced from Merriam Town Center.
Can you just see? Yeah. Okay. If there, are there any other questions? Or I guess here's the budget calendar again. We'll be back on July 10 to talk about expenditures and what the whole budget as a whole looks like. And we'll need to determine whether or not to exceed the revenue neutral rate. Assuming that we're going to, then August 21, we'll be here to pass that resolution and to also adopt the budget. So if you have any questions or concerns, please feel free to call me. Be happy to discuss any of this with you.
If I could add, just to reiterate a point that Director Oliver shared. We need to be mindful, and we will do at the staff level our best to communicate this, that while we are rolling the mill back, we will be exceeding the revenue neutral rate, which means we will still officially be painted as raising taxes because the mill levy is going up while the mill levy rate is going down. We will celebrate that in as many ways as we can, that we are rolling it back for the first time. But it is, for some cities, they can roll it back two and a half and they, which is fantastic if you roll it back two and a half if you're a resident. But you still have to say you're exceeding the revenue neutral rate and you maybe don't get the credit for rolling it back two or two and a half, as some neighboring cities did last year.
I'd like to make sure we take care of our employees and make sure they get raises next year.
Thank you very much, sir. You, you get my vote.
I just have a quick question. When was the, the last time we touched the mill rate? It was in 2008, but we raised it. When was the last time we lowered it? Do you know?
I do not know. I can research that and all.
I was just curious.
It was before my time.
Before 2005.
Actually, we didn't raise them in an incremental way. So the 2008.
We had to raise them all at once.
It was big.
I remembered that, but yeah, okay, thank you.
We, we can look that up. That'd be a great, that'd be a great data, point of data for our communications team to, to celebrate with confetti blowing up on whatever Facebook post we make.
On TikTok, it'd be like, I wonder what the number one song was in America the last time we.
Something by Laura Branigan.
Any questions for Director Oliver?
I just want to say, I, I hope you're going to forward the slides to us.
Absolutely.
Thank you very much.
I can do that, absolutely.
There's one I'd like to post.
Okay. Okay.
Thank you.
Very good.
Okay, well, let's see, what do we have coming up next?
Monthly finance report. I guess you're still here.
I'm still here. Still here. This was included in your packet. One thing that I would like to specifically direct your attention for, on this first page that kind of has all these nice summaries, we've added a category under revenues for Merriam Community Center. So you can now see each month how we're doing compared to budget. We had deliberately not put that on there at first because we were going through the pandemic and it didn't seem like a reasonable comparison, but things have really stabilized. I talked to Director Slocum before this meeting and she had stated that on Friday, Friday, we. Tell them the good news.
So I'm, Chris tells me not to worry about it, but it's in my DNA to worry about these things. So on Friday, we needed $1,700 to surpass June of 2023. And on Friday, we did more than $1,700 with the business to surpass 2022. So we are already in the black when you compare June of '22 to June of '23.
Yeah, awesome.
So unless there's any questions?
I have, it's really not a, well, sort of a question. So when we, we talk about that the auto sales are so much higher and all that, we really have no way of knowing whether it's volume or the cost of a car, right? Whether they're selling more cars or they're just more expensive.
Right. I mean, I, I would say it's, we know a lot of it is inflation. I mean, cars are definitely more expensive, but, but we don't really have a way of knowing. That's not.
Library, Cancer Center, and Marion Grand Station all continue to go along at their expected pace. I will say that Marion Grand Station, we've had a number of onsite meetings, utility coordination and things like that. It is, those are, those are exciting meetings with lots of different players, so those are keeping us very busy on that with that. Also, we're just like, as we've been talking about property tax, I'd like to highlight one of our grant programs, the property tax rebate. You recall, residents that make eighty percent of the air meaning income in their household, the city will rebate their, the city's portion of the property tax. You allocated forty-five thousand dollars for that grant this year, and we are down to four thousand dollars on that. So if anybody has, if there's anybody out there, and I know a lot of the community members are talking to each other and bringing other other folks in, and that's fantastic, but we have just a little bit left to go on that. So I didn't check lately, but so I do think there is just a, just a little bit left in that fund. And then the last thing I have is we have hired a new planner, Andrea Fair, our former planner, has gone to O'Leighton, we wish her the best, and new planner we hired, Jasmine Bustos, so if you were in City Hall at some point in time, come see myself or Nancy, we'd be happy to introduce her to you. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions anybody may have.
Okay, go ahead, Mr. Silvers.
I had a quick question. I was speaking to a neighbor who took advantage of the exterior grant program, and I couldn't remember because I feel like you lowered the number of years you had to wait before you could re-apply. Can you remind me, is it three years now?
I want to say five, but don't quote me. I will get that out, too, because I believe it was ten previously, and I think it's now five, but I will.
Sorry, I didn't mean to cut you off.
Now, a couple of things. One, that is only for each program, so if you get exterior grant this year and next year you want to do sustainability grant, you certainly can, or vice versa. So but I will, I will verify that, make sure that my old memory memory is working correctly, and I'll get that, I'll get that out to the camera.
Well, your old memory matched their memory, so I think it is five years.
Okay. Do you know how we're doing on trees? Are all the trees claimed?
Forty-five percent, we paid a bill, forty-five percent of that project, so October will be the next planning.
Well, do you know if they're all claimed for the fall?
I could double check, but I'm pretty sure it's dwindling down.
All right.
They're all claimed except for one. And then there's a weight.
I don't need one. I guess some neighbors do.
Everybody knows about it.
Okay. Any other questions for Director Dyer? Looks like you're off the hook.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I haven't spoke to you, Director, or pretend to find. Has there been any other concerns? I had contacted the tree. I have an issue with my tree, and nobody ever called me back. So I don't know. I don't know if it's occurred to anybody else, but I just thought that was kind of odd. With Heartland, with Heartland Tree Lines? Heartland Tree, yeah. I left my name, and I mean, I went to voicemail and.
He forgot to tell them he was the mayor.
Yeah, I didn't say that, but but anyway, I have something eating on the on the leaves. It's still green, and I'm watering it, but I'm thinking they might want to check it out for.
Or at least direct you to what to do.
We all what to do. I mean, if I'm supposed to, I don't see anything eating on it, but there are holes in my leaves, so anyway, we'll track it down. Take picture, okay. Okay, well, I'll send that to the appropriate person here to give me the correct answers, but not, but anyway, tell them, though, too, please. Thank you. All right. Well, the next items, I guess, are just informational items, the Public Art Committee, we had minutes and PC minutes, planning pitch minutes. Any questions for anyone concerning those minutes? Need to direct staff? I see no questions for that, okay. Ms. Engel, do you have anything else for for us this evening? Just two items, Mayor, since you took most of the great ones. I will only just repeat one of them. I did have the great pleasure to be invited and interview finalist candidates in Overland Park for the chief position, and Chief Long did a heck of a job, as did Chief Kusick, who is the deputy chief now. And so it was a fantastic panel, fantastic candidates. We are in good hands with Chief Long and Chief Kusick, but Chief Long did a fantastic job. I was glad I was able to be a part of that. Before this meeting, we had a candidate meeting, so most of you hopefully will remember that when you ran first time, unless you were Councilmember Hands, which.
Were you going in?
Yeah, Laura Branigan was on the radio, yeah. That that we do a, we invite candidates in for a kind of a, just a brief overview of about an hour of what all of the departments do, so we bring in the directors and some key staff members and share with the candidates who are the points of contact that they'll want to reach out to as they're looking for information as they campaign. What are the, maybe some common questions that we hear gives staff, to be quite honest, an opportunity to have a, an immediate conduit to let candidates know how awesome staff is and how awesome being a council member is. So we took advantage of that earlier, thanks to Clerk Pennick for setting that up, and thanks for those that were in attendance. We did have a good showing of the candidates for the fall election. So that was earlier this evening. And the last one is I will be on a real, real vacation effective this Friday until the twelfth. I'll be in Boulder, Colorado, and then in Lake Cordelene, returning Monday shortly before the council meeting. I will be here. I promise I'll be here. Make promises, okay. I promise I'll be here. If I have to leave early, I'll drive home.
The council meeting's on the tenth, and you said you were going to be gone through the twelfth, so.
Then I don't, yeah.
Just clarifying.
The tenth, I'll be, I will be back by the meeting. We're moving the meeting to the twelfth on Tuesday.
I had to, sorry.
No, I will be back by Monday, the the tenth. Thank you. Okay, all right. Did you, Mr. Silvers, did you have something? I don't know. Yeah, happy to, happy to answer any questions. Yeah, if we have any questions, go ahead, Mr. Silvers.
I'm not looking necessarily for an answer today, but with all the train derailments that have been in the news, is there a way that we could get a presentation of how the city is prepared for a catastrophe like that that could possibly happen in our city?
We can run some research on that and see if what what we have in the plans.
I think it'd be good to prepare for it based on information that's been shared that trains are longer now and staffing is lowered per train. I'm hoping it's not an inevitability, but it's a possibility.
Sure.
And it, I think it'd be comforting to us and our citizens to know that not only the county has a plan, but the city has a plan.
Sure, we can look into that and see what's available. As a note of interest, we did have a train derailment in Marion in the nineteen fifties, prior to my time, but I saw pictures.
The last time we lowered the mill levy?
Yeah, the last time we lowered the, very good, Mr. Leahy.
Well, and we also have a major natural gas line running through town. And they all kind of intersect right where we live, so.
Yes, they do.
I will just say that Chief Long probably has this all under control, so. Okay, awesome. Any other questions from Stringle? Okay, I see none. Have a safe trip. I would entertain a motion for adjournment.
Mr. Mayor?
Oh, go ahead.
I move we adjourn.
Okay, a motion. Ms. Yodrich.
Mr. Mayor, second.
Motion second, Madam Clerk.
All in favor.
Aye.
Meeting's adjourned.